Good evening. How are you?
Hi, sorry to bother you, but Benny signed in for the LDC, but he was supposed to sign both of our names.
Well, we have to speak.
Oh, only him?
Only one person, because it's gonna be two minutes. Look how many people would be there all night.
Okay, understood, understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to CB5 Public Hearing. We would like to thank each and every one of you for coming out this evening. It's a pleasure to stand before you. My community voice staff, we have Melinda Perkins, who's the district manager. We have Ms. Shamika Chappell, who's also on the back. And we have a host of other people here. We also have a lot of our board members that's in the crowd. Board members, could you please stand up so that they know who you are? Without further ado, we're gonna start the meeting. It is actually 6:46. I'm calling the meeting to order. Roll call for the land use. Someone gonna do the roll call for me? Boris?
Shamika? Ms. Chappell, do you have the list for land use only? Land use, the land use committee?
No, it's not.
It usually is.
The agenda for land use only?
No, the agenda don't have a land use plan, so we gotta come from here? She made me make a second one for land?
All right, this is roll call for only Housing and Land Use Committee members. Ms. Vivian Bright. Excuse, Mr. Miguel Feliciano. Ms. Odessa Finn. Ms. Roe Johnson. Ms. Alice Lowman. Mr. Isaiah Thomas. Ms. Sandra Mingo. Mr. Paul Mohammed. Ms. Julia Neal. Julia. And Mr. Boris Santos, present. Five of... Ten. That's quorum.
Thank you. Honestly, it's like everybody's missing. Ms. Chappell? I'm gonna do the attendance. This is the roll call for board members. We have Ms. Deborah Axe. One second. Thank you. Ms. Deborah Axe. Alisa Albanathy. Alfred Adams. Amiria Allen. Thank you. Shani Bell. Nidia Bonafon. Thank you. Vivian Bright. Alton Brown. Charles Bullock. Arissa Cameron. Natasha Cherry Perez. Thank you. Juan Cologne. Ethel Cook. Rochelle Ellison. Dewayne Faison. Mr. Faison? Thank you. Miguel Feliciano. Anna Fisher. Thank you. Wilfredo Florentino. Jessica Franco. Dewayne Frankenson? Thank you. Odessa Finn? Thank you. Jabril Gaskin. Aura Goodwin. Granville Andrea. Thank you. Jimmy Giddy. Thomas Hayes. Suzanne Jacobs. Ebony Johnson. Thank you. Amia Johnson. Roe Johnson. Thank you. Grace Jones Roberts. Thank you. Doron Linton. Alice Lowman, present. And Dretta Mitchell. Judith Noreen. Pierre Kelly. Evelyn Pugh. Alberto Ramos. Tanisha Ritter Hudson. Thank you. Wilma Rivera. Thank you. Abdul Satar. Albert Scott Jr. Tanee Snuggs. Isaiah Thomas. Luz Torres. Emily Walker. Thank you. Monique Wallace. Gina Watson. Tina Wilkinson. And Hazel Worley. We're gonna acknowledge Charles Bullock as being present. We do not have quorum. We have quorum for committee, but we don't have quorum for board. So what we will be doing tonight, we will be going over both projects, which will be the Totum, and also the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation. Thank you, board member Natasha Cherry Perez. I appreciate you jumping in and filling in. Thank you so much. Since we don't have quorum with the board, the only thing we'll be able to do tonight is vote out of committee the Totum project, and also vote out of committee the project with the Parks Department. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for July 25, 2025. Motion was made by committee member Paul Mohammed and second by board member Anita Fisher. So the presentation, the first presentation is gonna be New York City Parks Department. You guys may come up and take the podium. Welcome, and thank you for coming.
Hello? Hello, good evening. Hello, board members, members of the public. My name is Colleen Alderson. I'm the chief of Parklands and Real Estate for the New York City Parks Department. I'm joined by a couple of my colleagues, Robert Sanchez, a planning fellow, also Elizabeth Earnish, a senior planner, part of the planning unit at the Parks Department. We have the slides up on the screen, and there's hard copies as well. I think there's some still back on the table. Just gonna run through the slides, presenting the ULP application. Just, our plan is just to walk through what the project is, project background that informed the ULP application, an overview of the project, and then the next steps in timeline. Just for the basics, the ULP plan use application before the board, the title is the Brooklyn Community District 5 Walk to Park Site Selection and Acquisition Application. The ULP number is there indicated. This ULP application is seeking approval for the city to acquire property to create public parks. We are the applicant, the New York City Parks Department. The co-applicant is the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, and they play a critical role in carrying out the acquisition process, so that's why they're the co-applicant. Just at the outset, I just wanna clarify that this application, we don't expect all of the properties involved to have willing sellers. So I just wanna make that point known, and that we don't expect to acquire all the sites that are formed part of the application, because it depends on the individual property owners. In terms of the project background, in terms of how we formulated this ULP application, for, being from the Parks Department, we know, and as many, all of you know, that parks are really critical to the well-being of communities for a variety of reasons. Mental, physical health, they play a role with climate change, resiliency, they can act like sponges, and they also are just simply part of the urban environment that we live. They also can do a lot for social cohesion. So parks are very important, we believe, and I'm sure many of you do as well. Some of the plans and policies that advocate for parks in communities are listed on the next page. We also talk about the equitable access to parks across the city. There are areas of the city that don't have as many parks as others, and there's areas of the city that people are not within walking distance to a community park. There are various plans over the years, Plan NYC, One NYC, looking at a target of eighty-five percent of New York City residents living within a walking distance to a park. It's a very important thing, because the more readily you have access to parks, the more you'll get all the benefits from the parks of those things I mentioned before, the physical, mental health, social cohesion, all of those things. So those are some of the plans that informed our effort. More recently, gut stuff built, it was an initiative a couple of years ago, to look for efficiencies in the land use review process. And there was a specific initiative that called for the Parks Department to look at underserved areas of the city using consistent metrics, and to pursue a ULP application as what we will describe. In terms of the current parks initiatives, I hope maybe you've heard about it, but the Vital Parks for All, investing in New York City's living infrastructure. New York City parks are critical for this. We want to equitably strengthen the health, environment, and communities of New York City through our park system. And that includes a lot of different efforts, including growing green space in underserved communities. In terms of growing green space, we work on a lot of different ways to do this. The Walk to Park Initiative, in terms of focusing on increasing access to the underserved areas of the city. We also have done a lot in looking at existing city assets that can be open for larger community use. So jointly operated playgrounds, the schoolyards to playgrounds. These are schoolyards that are used by schools during the school day, and then after-school use, and on the weekends, they're open up to the larger community. Not all schoolyards are open like that, so we work with the Department of Education to get the resources to open more schoolyards. There was just last week additional schoolyards budgeted, so they can be open those extra hours. We also have partnered with the New York City Housing Authority. So they have open space on complexes, and some open spaces at the edges that are not open to the public. So we partnered with them to improve those spaces and open them up for larger community use. It's been a great partnership, and there's been a few sites throughout the city that have been realized that way. That being said, we still have underserved communities in the city, and that's why we're trying to figure out a new path, so we can create parks in underserved areas. The issues are that there's limited vacant available land for the city to acquire. Property owners are not aware that the city is interested in pursuing new parks in underserved areas. There's a long timeline for approval to go through the land use review process. It takes a lot of work and effort and time, and frankly, sometimes we lose out on opportunities because of that. And we have to go through ULP before we can start to engage with a property owner to actually negotiate and for the city to make an offer. So through this ULP, we aspire to create a new way so that we can look at opportunities that might make for viable sites in a community, and get the land use approval in hand, should there be a willing seller. Because then we're past the ULP phase, and we can sort of pick up and talking to a property owner to proceed to see if we can acquire the property. Typically, the process is two to three years. With the ULP in hand, we feel like the process could be six to twelve months, again, should there be a willing seller for a property owner. So this ULP application, it has several sites selected that we think could make for viable parks. We feel like this will help and boost the city's efforts to realize opportunities when they come to fruition. And it's efficient, and typically, we work one site at a time and go through ULP. Here, we're trying to get the approval in place, so we can work with any property owners that might be interested, as long as they're part of the application. This also does not mean that we can never do another ULP as we did before. This is a new approach, including many sites. It does not mean that this is the one and only thing that we can do. If there's a property that comes up in the future, we could go through ULP. That could happen as well. And just to explain that walking access to existing park resources, the 2030 goal is that eighty-five percent of the New York City residents are within walking distance to a park, which is really critical, we believe, in people actually getting all the benefits that open spaces provide. The city is currently at eighty-four point two, which sounds pretty good, but based on the city's population, there's still 1.4 million people that are not within walking distance to a park. So that's what we're trying to work on. This map shows all the pockets of areas across the city where residents do not have readily accessible open space. I'm now gonna turn it over to my colleague Rob Sanchez, who will walk through the rest of the slides.
Thank you, Colleen. So with all that context in mind, and in many, many conversations with the Department of City Planning, we determined that the community district scale would be the best approach to apply this new initiative that we're piloting. And so in order to do that, we had to come up with specific criteria, which CD should be included in this effort. So we came up with two, the first of which is that the district has to have more than fifteen thousand people living in these gap areas per square mile, so based on the last slide that Colleen shared. This district qualifies there. And then we have two options, the district either have to have an open space ratio below 1.3, which is the amount of, which is one acre per every thousand residents. Or the district had to have a higher poverty rate than the citywide average, which at the time of analysis was seventeen point nine percent. So based on those two criteria, we actually got nineteen districts. This is one of the first two districts that we're beginning this initiative in. It's Brooklyn District 5 and Queens District 3 that we're starting with. So on the next slide, you'll see the criteria that this community district met. So here you can see that there's over twenty-seven thousand people in the district who live further than a walk to a park. They don't really get a lot of the benefits associated with parks that we went over previously. The district, though, does have a high or a very healthy open space ratio at three point one five, though the poverty rate is very high at twenty-seven point seven percent. So the poverty rate and underpopulation are why this district's being included in this effort. We wanted to take a look at things beyond just the numbers, and more so in terms of the context of the district, as to why parkland might be a benefit here. Since the East New York rezoning back in 2016, as well as a number of other housing projects in the works, there's a lot of population growth throughout this district and more to be expected. As a result, more parkland would be needed to accommodate this growing population, making sure that the current and future residents are able to access it kind of evenly throughout the district. We also did take a look at the recent community district needs statement, and noted that the district has been asking for new places for recreation, fitness, things like that. And, you know, some of these parks could serve as potential fitness areas in coordination with the community to design whatever features you guys might want in these spaces. Then I wanted to highlight this map, so not only does it show the council members relevant to this community district, but take a look at where all the green spaces are here. It does look like there is quite a lot. But on the next slide, you'll see that many of these spaces are actually operating with limited hours. This is because they're either jointly operated playgrounds, or schoolyards to playgrounds like Colleen was talking about before, as well as a lot of community gardens. And we are very grateful that we have all of these in our portfolio. They are very important resources for communities. However, they just simply are not as accessible as our normal parks are. And so many of the existing green spaces in this district fall under those kind of limited hour green spaces. So with that all said, we did have to identify specific sites, so specific tax lots and lots to include in our application. So firstly, we developed primary sites through conversation with the Department of City Planning, and came up with a number of criteria that sites had to meet in order to be included in the application. First of all, and most importantly, is that these sites have to be vacant, so you can see on the image just a piece of vacant land, the type of sites that we're looking for. They also have to be a minimum of five thousand square feet. We visited each and every one of these sites just to confirm these facts. And then lastly, there had to be no records on the Department of Buildings for any permanence or possible development on these sites. And then this map here just shows the location of all the sites we were able to find that meet these requirements. Just to note, in our last time speaking with this board, we did take feedback into consideration about sites in the industrial business zone here. You know, we know this community really wants a lot of economic development and jobs, so we did remove many of the sites in that district, so we're in that portion of the district. So we are left with seven. It's not a lot. I'll also flag that if any of you didn't grab a copy of these slides, they're in the back, and they show each and every one of the sites at the very end, if you wanna take a look at all of them. We'll only be showing a couple of examples during the presentation. So the first one is on the next slide. This is a primary vacant site on Sheffield Avenue. And then the second example we wanted to show, this one's an assemblage, so it's several tax lots that we would add up into one. It's on the corner of Atkins Avenue and Linden Boulevard, also vacant. But as I mentioned, we do only have seven primary sites, which is not a lot. And in other districts that we're applying this initiative to, there's even less. So that really, you know, gave us the incentive to look at other options, and really expand the criteria we were looking for, namely in the form of land use codes. So secondary sites were a criteria we developed with city planning. This expands beyond just vacant lots, and it includes commercial, industrial, transportation, and more. We did exclude residential, we know that this district is really in need of, and advocates for affordable housing in particular, and so, you know, we don't want to intrude on that. Similarly to the primary sites, these also had to be five thousand square feet. We visited each one of these. And importantly, the ones that we selected here are those that are built up to fifty percent or less of their allowable floor area ratio. This could potentially mean that the owner is not making full use of their development potential, and perhaps would want to sell as a result of that. Also, these sites are restricted to just the gap areas, so these are really targeted for those areas where people are living further than a walk to a park. This map shows a location, so as you can see, they're all in those pink areas where those gaps exist. So they're all very concentrated in certain parts of the district. Some examples include a car wash that's actually right up here on Atlantic Avenue, that met our criteria. And then another example is this automotive use located on Fulton Street. So this slide just kind of summarizes what we were able to find through those analyses, and, you know, taking feedback into consideration that the district provided, like I mentioned earlier. We are left with a total of twenty-three sites. Seven of them are primary sites, sixteen of them are secondary. And again, just to reiterate, we are only looking for willing sellers, so the reality is, it's very unlikely we'll have twenty- So the reality is it's very unlikely we'll have 23 potential options for acquisition. The intention here is to give us the flexibility, um, should a willing seller come forward, to be able to acquire any of these sites following ULP approval. Um, and just to note, this is not an approval that is going to be infinite. Um, we are subject to a limit of 10 years from when the application is approved. Um, so within those 10 years, uh, if we're able to acquire a site, then we have the authority to do so. And then lastly, just a note on the timeline. So this application was certified by the City Planning Commission on May 19th. Um, so that's followed by two, two-ish months of community board review. So we're currently in that period. Um, that's what this first meeting is for. It'll then go to Borough President for review, uh, and then the City Planning Commission reviews it. Uh, and then the mayor has a couple of days optionally to weigh in after that. And this is expected to continue through, uh, later this, this fall, potentially into winter as well. And then, Colleen, if you want to speak a little bit on acquisition after ULP.
We're almost done. Um, we added this slide from when we were last here, meeting with board members in April. But this speaks to, should this ULP application be approved? What happens next? And how does the city's process work? So, um, the first thing is identifying any willing sellers. Um, and I think there's a moment of conversation with the board because the application has many sites. So where, where might there be an opportunity here? So that's the first thing. Then the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, which is a city agency that actually carries out the acquisition process, they would appraise the land based on fair market value. They look at the existing zoning when they do that. And, uh, we would also be carrying out environmental site assessment. We're obligated to do that before the city acquires property. We want to understand the conditions of the property, very important. Um, if we want to choose to move forward with the acquisition, there's an important step that happens. The Parks Commissioner writes to the city's budget office, um, demonstrates that we have the ULP approval to make the acquisition and cites a budget line. And, um, there is a lot of review of those requests. And what comes out of that is the permission for the city to move forward and negotiate with a given property owner officially. And, um, there's a lot of review of that by many people at, um, OMB. And the deputy mayor signs off on that and it's copied to the local council person. And, um, it's very important, we are required to have that approval before we can move forward. And then, once we get that, um, approval, that allows DCAST to formally make an offer to a given property owner. Again, a willing seller. They negotiate and that can take a variety of time depending on, you know, the owner and, and, and how they react to the offer. Once, if there is a deal that's, um, uh, approved and if, um, the owner accepts, then it goes into the contract phase. And so DCAST has lawyers, there's a standard purchase agreement by the city. They, um, work through that. The, the property owner has their attorney and it's a contract back and forth. That can take different amounts of time, depends on the property owner involved. Um, and then, once a contract is executed, it's transmitted to the New York City Law Department for closing. So, and once that happens, then, um, the property is assigned to the Parks Department. And then we can pick up on the capital process that maybe, uh, many of the board members are familiar with. Before we design any of these new sites, we would engage with the community to ask, what kind of park amenities would you like to see here? Our design or capital division would work with the community to come up with a vision, a plan for the, for the project and carry forward that design procurement and then construction phase. So the acquisition process, we estimate six to 12 months. There's a lot of factors, as you can, uh, as you can imagine, involved, but that's sort of the general timeframe. The capital process, we say is like three years. One year for design, one year for procurement, one year for construction. So that's what's involved in creating a new park. Um, and this ULP is trying to get one step forward in trying to realize opportunities when there's a willing seller. So that's the idea behind this ULP. And I think that's, that's all we have.
Thank you for the presentation. Is there any questions from the, from the community? Questions, you could stand up right here by the mic, to my right.
Hello, everyone. Uh, a quick question. What, um, what mechanisms of perhaps social media have you, um, aligned with this project? And if, and if you need any assistance with that, have you reached out to anyone? Is there any organization that could assist you with this?
Um, do you mean like outreach to property owners? Is that what you're, yes. Okay, well, um, you know, sometimes that can be difficult. Um, and I should have said, we are obligated to send out letters to any property owner subject of the ULP application before each hearing in the ULP process. So we had to send out letters for this hearing. We have to send out letters before the BP hearing, City Planning Commission, et cetera. So we've sent out that notice. Um, the Parks Department, we have our press office. We have the planning, uh, group that reaches out to property owners. Um, we, we hear things from community members, from community board members or elected officials. Maybe a property owner is in touch with them, but we don't have a separate contract for social media. We, we do have on the Parks Department's website, a page about our walk to park effort. Um, so we do have that. Um, but, yeah, so, I mean, we're all ears when people think that might be an opportunity, um, for any of these sites in engagement with the property owner. Sometimes it can be difficult. Um, you know, they're not sure the letter they receive, if it's, you know, legit or what have you. So, um, and often it's, um, hearing from community members is a, a better thing, so, yeah.
So you said you sent out letters. Did you get any response back?
I, I did get, uh, one property owner did, uh, reach out, um, to me and followed up, got the letter. Wanted to just generally understand what the ULP application was about. Um, and, um, I followed up by sending the actual project description so they could understand the background a bit more. Um, so that's what I can tell you. But one property owner did reach out, um, and, um, I expect I might hear from more and as more, the letters go out for the future hearings. Um, so, thank you.
Hello, hello, hello. Good evening. My name is Angus. My name is Angus Fisher. Um, I have one question. With the parks being so strapped for cash, um, and not being funded how they need to be, how, how do they intend on taking on this new stock of properties and, um, buying these new spaces within the community?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the question. We've heard this, um, during this effort. Um, you know, I should just say that the, for any new property acquired, there is consideration by the Parks Department, by OMB. Are there the resources to be able to care and maintain for a given park? So there is, uh, the question that comes from OMB when we're looking to get a certificate to proceed, um, the permission to advance a project. Um, you know, Parks Department has a very, very dedicated staff. We do have, um, parks and some are, uh, you know, the community members would appreciate more attention. Um, I know there are various efforts by the city to address, um, the second shift program, trying to target hotspots. That was something funded and being carried out throughout the city. Um, we also are making other efforts just on the enforcement front. Um, there was, uh, a change in the way that the enforcement of dumping is, and the fines related to that. So there are different measures that the Parks Department is taking to try to care for our existing parks. Um, but, so I hear the concern, there is scrutiny. Um, but we still would like to proceed in creating the parks in the areas that are underserved. Um, so, so, yeah.
Hello, uh, my name is Della Clement Waha. I'm pretty much representing the tenant association from Atlantic Towers. If I should say so, but I'm here individually at the same time. And, um, I have a concern with the parks that's already been built. We have one on the other side from the building that's, um, from the schools. Um, and that's between Dean and, um, what's the other street? Um, I forgot the name of the street. Um, it's, uh, between Rockaway and Thomas Boylan anyway. And then there is a huge park that's built over here at Broadman Junction. Um, but there's two things that's in mind, that, who designs the, the, the park arrangement? Because I noticed there is, um, there's a lack of, um, what you would call, um, projections for, for the community to have, um, different, um, activities in the park space that shouldn't just represent, seeming to represent what the neighborhood or the underserved neighborhood seem to be about. Or some things that can also, um, improve the quality of different activities. So for example, um, the park at Betsy Head has baby hoops. And that's quite interesting to me. Um, baby hoops for, for basketball, right? Um, and on the other side, they have other things. Um, each of the parks have a lot of basketballs, but I have not seen any lawn tennis. Have not seen any volleyball. And, you know, there is other sports, um, that can be presented in that way. So the, um, underserved can have ideas outside of basketball. That's one thing. And then I'm also looking at for, um, seniors, that we have a large community of senior citizens, right? Um, there's a lot of nurses, um, like assistants, nursing, um, people that's going out to help the, the, the disabled or the, um, the seniors. And if there can be, um, different activities that incorporate for the seniors, especially if we're talking about walking to the park, that should be an activity that they should also be engaged into. Thank you.
So you want to answer?
Of course, yes. So, um, you know, in the capital design process, um, our landscape designers do engage, aim to engage with the community through the community board and other members of the public to help inform the programming, exactly to the point you're talking about. What are the recreation facilities in need? You know, exactly what you said, is it possible to put this amenity here? We have a basketball court, you know, you know, we have enough of those, what about this? That's exactly the kind of thing. So the community board is involved in that process. And, um, Elizabeth, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Are the community input meetings on our website when they happen? They are. So, um, you know, and we really want to make sure that we engage, continue to engage with the community board should this ULP be approved. So we can keep in communication about sites. And we want to see the parks be completed and opened. So we really aspire to make sure we're going to be in touch with the community board as, uh, opportunities for sites with willing sellers come on. And then may, when that, you know, when the acquisition has happened and then as that design process unfolds. Um, but thank you for the comment and question.
Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Terrell Bellfield. Um, and the, the first thing I'll say is that I just, I think we have an ample amount of, um, green spaces already in the community. So to uproot, you know, I understand, you know, utilizing the lots. But I think that, um, it's not purposeful to us because we do have parks that are parks that need improvement. So to then put a new park, what does that even look like? You know, what does it look like to take a concrete slab of just land and then make it a park? Um, so that's one question. And if you can explain a little bit more about the secondary sites? Because, um, on those secondary sites, those are businesses. So like the car wash, the bank, the auto zone, what does that mean? Does that mean you're going to try to put a park behind it, next to it, near it? Or uproot the business that's already there?
Um, on the, uh, your first question, I'm not sure that I fully understood it. But, um, uh, on the vacant sites that are, you know, a parking lot maybe or behind a fence, should there be a willing seller, should the city acquire the property? Our goal would be to transform that space. Um, there are walk gaps. There's almost 30,000, um, residents in the community district that are not within a walking distance to a park. So that's what really our goal is. On the secondary sites, um, again, we're looking for willing sellers. But if it is a larger site, it could be that they're, you know, we're looking for at least 5,000 square feet. So it could be that a, a, a property owner might be interested in selling a portion of their site. So that could be a scenario. If there is a structure on the property, um, as part of the capital project, we would have to address it. We would want to demolish it, improve the site with the amenities that the community is looking for. But again, it's based on a, a property owner, if they're looking to sell their property. Um, and to the city for a park purpose. One very important thing I should have mentioned is the authority through this ULP is only to allow the, the city to acquire for a park purpose. That budget approval I talked about, that only allows us to acquire for a park purpose. So that, that is our goal behind this. Um, and as, as Rob said, there are parks in the district. There are many parks in the district. There's also gap areas and there's also existing park resources. They're not open as a typical community park is because it's a schoolyard. It serves the school during the day. Um, so, or it's a community garden. Those are stewarded, um, by community residents on a voluntary basis. They're not able to have the community garden space open all the time. So, and we understand that, they're volunteers. So there are a lot of existing resources in the community, but there are some limitations in terms of, for all residents' use, or, you know, as a typical park hours.
Thank you for your answer. And I'll just, my general opinion is that I think if you all would start to show us, I know you showed us a few examples, but start on a smaller scale. I think East New York is developing enough. And if we add on more construction, more construction, and we're going to go through 10 years of things looking messed up. And then one day, when it's all said and done, we'll be, you know, out of here. So I, that's, that's my opinion, but, you know, thank you for all your answers.
Good evening. My name is Ebony Johnson and I am one of our CB5 members. The problem I'm having with this presentation is first, it's a lot of what ifs, could be's, maybes. We're not sure how that looks, right? So I'll use Atkins and Linden for a perfect example. That is on the corner of Linden Boulevard, whose child is crossing Linden. Behind Linden are, are factories, right? The very next block, which is where Workman or Stanley, those are factories. So that whole neighborhood isn't conducive for a child to go to a playground. So some of the spaces that you're saying, we want to put a playground. How about like Terrell said, why don't we use, utilize the already utilized parks, right? If you, you stated that you guys have relationship now with the DOE where they're going to start to allow those parks to be open in certain hours, right? So why don't we use that, right? Instead of asking to create more parks where we already have parks? How about fruit stands? Not only that, but when you create the parks, you don't hire the people from our community. So we're not even looking at the people from our community working in the parks. Second, parks also close and then you have drugs, sex, and a lot of excessness that we don't need in the community to which we're already combating half of that that is here. So that becomes the question, how does it become a benefit, right? So over the next 10 years, we plan to build more parks, which openly means we're going to push more of the residents that live here out of the community to have a park. We have a lot of parks. We don't have enough kids to play in the parks because the safe, the spaces are not safe for them. So when you're looking at certain areas, such as some of these parking lots, whose child is playing in that area? It's not making sense to take over the land if we're saying it's for park use for children. So my question overall becomes, are we really looking at it from the perspective of the community? And what the children of the community need? Cause they're going to be here in 10 years. Some of us won't, right? So how do we fit the children of the community?
Good evening. My name is Charles Bullock, second vice chairman of the community board. I'm a firm believer that there shouldn't be building in the community without uplifting the community. So, I'm going to touch in on a little bit with what our sister just said. I believe that we should have a certain amount of jobs in the community when this building happens. So, there should be some type of structure to the programming of helping the community when we present these projects. SYEP, the children of the community, there should be structured like weekly programs during the summer and just the numbers of, you know, you have to sustain the park. You have to guarantee that we have people in the community sustaining the park at a good wage. So, just wrapping that into the presentation, I think would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, I love the idea, not completely opposed. My question is, what are you doing for the parks that we already have? Like Sutter Battlefield, my son loves to play in that park, there's no lights, no one comes and clean the grass, dogs go in there. So, we have spaces that are being neglected and ignored that are perfect to be spruced up to allow kids to go and play. So, part of this proposal should include, how do we fix up what we already have to make it safe, right? Because you have that park, and I'm going to say Sutter Battlefield again. If you walk from the train station of Ann sickling to, it's dark, you can't see anything, right? I've seen a skunk in there. So, that means no one is taking care of it. So, if we could get someone to just take care of the spaces that we already have, maybe allocate some of that budget to that, and then look for additional places to add.
Thank you.
I think she heard my mind. On Sutter Avenue, you know, I remember when Man Up, I was with them when they first started, that corner right there, is that Hendrix? Right there, Sutter right there, right there where we were talking, yes, that's Hendrix. That's a lot, a square block all the way around. See, because we have to realize, that's why I'm glad that you're here, and I'm glad to hear a couple of things. They say a people without vision perish. Everybody's coming to what they think we should have, we have to start standing up what we want. We want our community to be for us. See, this is what this is all about. We hear, everybody comes talking about, you're not building with us, you're building on us. And again, what she said about 10 years, we won't be here with what they're doing. You better pay close attention. They are talking about changing your whole charter, all this talk in your community board, and your city council will not have a right to vote on what you need. So, we're, this is a watershed moment. We want that Sutter Battlefield, and they call it Battlefield, but I remember there was no housing around there, I used to go shop, there was bricks around there. But it's been like that now for 35 years. We deserve to have that, we don't want you to get these little slots. Make that a recreational center for our children, right there, invest in us. Don't come telling us what you want, we'll tell you what we need.
Well, I'm just going to touch a little on what Brother Paul said. You guys came to our committee at land use, and that was one of the first things we spoke about, our vision to have that Sutter Field, because Marty Ma, I believe at the time, he said that everything is equipped already, that we can put a rec center, we wanted a rec center to replica BRC, which is Brownsville Recreation Center. We should be able to have one in East New York as well. So, we should be putting some funding together because something is already there. It's not like you got to start from scratch. That is a perfect place to put a BRC, right there on Sutter Avenue. This is something that our former chair spoke about, this is something that the current chair is speaking, and this is something that the community wants. So, take that into consideration and see what you can come up with for East New York, having an East New York rec center in East New York.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Mark LeBrew. I'm a community manager with Man Up Inc. And about this, we, about a couple of months ago, the Neighborhood Safety Council had a meeting, and something like this had came up. And my daughter here came up with a great idea, right? So, y'all talking about children, so let's hear what the children got to say about it, right? Come here, tell them what you said.
I made the idea that we can make an inside park so that mosquitoes couldn't bite the kids.
So, basically what she's saying is the same thing that the sister said here, right? You're talking about parks, let's talk about something that don't exist. The kids are looking for an inside park that they could go to during the winter time, right? That they could go to when it rains. So, if you're going to talk about something that they need, you heard it from her, she brought it up to the Neighborhood Safety Council, and now she's bringing it to the community board.
So, is that it for parks? So, I know we gave you an earful and a mouthful, but if you could take those things in consideration, we would definitely, definitely appreciate it.
We thank you.
Thank you very much. I have to make a correction publicly. The quorum for land use is not five, it is six. So, we cannot vote this out of committee right now. I'm hopeful that we have one more board member that will come so that we can vote these two items out of committee. But as it stands right now, at this moment, we do not have quorum for land use. There's five of us here, we need one more, which he said he's on his way. So, we're going to keep this meeting going on, and hopefully any minute, he walked through that door. So, for transparency, I just want to let everybody know that we only have five, we do not have six, and we need quorum. Announcement, because there's so many people in here tonight, and I know everybody want to speak about the Totem Project, we have a clock, two minutes, we have to have it for two minutes, because otherwise we'll be here until tomorrow morning. So, I'm going to ask when we, after we do the Totem Project, that organizations that's here as a group, we're going to call you up to come together, because we can't have individual people speak on the same thing, because it wouldn't be fair for the people that came straight from work and that's sticking it out for both projects. So, respectfully, you guys could come up as a organization in two minutes, two minutes, two minutes, two minutes. Otherwise, I'm going to have to hire somebody spontaneously to be the sandman and escort you from the front. So, with that being said, thank you all for staying, for being engaged in your community. We love you, and we're going to now let Totem do their presentation. Thank you, Tucker.
Thank you, Chair.
Hello, hello, respect, hello. We're going to ask you to leave, wait, wait, before you start. If you are unruly in this meeting, you will be escorted out. I will have NYPD come upstairs and escort you out. Respectfully, respect everybody in this room. Everybody will get a chance to speak, this is not no concert, this is not no karaoke, this is a community board meeting, and you will be asked to leave respectfully. You may go, Totem.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you all for coming out tonight on a Friday night in July. My name is Tucker Reed. Good evening to you all, really appreciate you coming to share your voice tonight. I appreciate the long engagement that we've had with Community Board Five. We tally today, we've been here 10 times in the last 12 months, so we're very happy to continue the conversation tonight. And I'm going to go through this presentation rather rapidly, because I really want to get to hear from everyone, and we've shared this many, many times. But Totem is a real estate development company founded by a bunch of former public servants. And we really founded the company because we believe everyone deserves housing. Many of us were housing insecure at various points in our life, and we think of building apartment buildings as building homes, not building units. We're here to build homes. And tonight, I hope you'll find us, we try to be humble, we try to be good listeners. We have tried to craft this proposal, working with many of you over many years, and we continue to try and do that as we move through the tail end of this process here. But Herkimer Williams, we think of Herkimer Williams as a generational project. It will turn dirt storage in parking lots into nearly 1,000 units of affordable housing, almost five basketball court size of new public spaces, a potential branch of CUNY, space for new jobs, new organizations, new employers, new community uses, as well as the preservation of industrial uses and small businesses. And it will complement nearly half a billion dollars in public investment that has poured into this community over the last couple of years. We've really tried to craft this project with the acute need for income levels in mind when it relates to affordable housing. And the racial equity report that was created as part of this rezoning action really revealed and reaffirmed to us, a feedback that we heard from a lot of folks, that there's a desperate need for housing in this neighborhood for people making between 30 and 80% of AMI. And so, we've tried to craft a proposal here today that really reflects both that and the fact that Broadway Junction sits at an ideal urban planning spot for transit oriented development, right? Everyone who lives in this neighborhood knows the number of, the amount of subway access here, the nearly 4 million people a year that entered this subway station that is now getting a complete makeover, the branch of the Long Island Railroad that sits at the southern end of the site. The next slide here shows you the exact boundaries of the rezoning area that we're talking about, the four blocks that are bound by Fulton, Herkimer, East New York, and Atlantic Avenues. This proposal draws on not just our ideas, Brother Paul said it so eloquently a second ago, we're not here to try to build on top of everyone. We've tried to take in all of the feedback that you all created over many years before we even came to you with this proposal. Proposals that were put forward by the city, proposals that were put forward by Community Board Five, proposals that were put forward by community groups, like our friends at the Coalition for Community Advancement I see here tonight. And we've tried to synthesize that into a proposal that you'll see reflected here. It also includes feedback, we haven't been just sitting back on our laurels, reading reports and coming to the community board once in a while. We've been at this for five years, we've met with hundreds of people in the neighborhood, lots of folks are here tonight, there's an emblematic list of some of those folks. You asked us to do a lot of things that we worked really hard to try and do. You asked us to try to build more affordable housing, less office space, make retail spaces that serve small businesses, mom and pop shops, create a space for CUNY, which I'm going to tell you a little bit about, but we have tried to move mountains to get CUNY's attention to come to Broadway Junction. Earlier iterations of this proposal also had things that folks didn't like, a potential closer of Herkimer Street for a block, which we worked really hard together to remove, and you'll see that here today. And also to ensure that this neighborhood has waited decades for the pouring in of community infrastructure dollars that are coming here in the form of new streetscapes, in the form of the ADA Accessibility Project at Broadway Junction. And the last thing we want to do is have our program disrupt any of that investment. And so, we've worked hard to try to time the actual project execution here so that it is not disruptive to any of the public investment that's coming to the neighborhood. Next slide. So, what is the proposal? As it's planned today, it is four buildings that would include up to 1,000 units of affordable housing, almost half a million square feet of new commercial space, another 100,000 square feet of ground floor retail, a new branch of, potentially of CUNY, 25,000 square feet of open space, I mentioned, that is the equivalent of five NBA basketball courts, we just calculated that the other day. And powered by local hiring and MWBE contracting, and you're going to hear, I think, a lot from some of the folks that we've been working hard to set very ambitious hiring goals that were reflected, folks who live in the neighborhood getting jobs in the neighborhood. The first phase of the project, so how are we going to do that? The first phase of the project is Building B, which is on the corner of Herkimer and Williams. It would be about 230 units of housing. We've been talking with HPD about targeting that at the very, the lowest available program that they offer in terms of income levels. It's called Ella, it would really target income ranges from 30 to 80% of AMI. It would also include community amenities like a computer lab, common areas, a green jobs incubator, I'm going to tell you about in a second, to make the building accessible to the neighborhood, not just for the folks who win the lottery and get to live there, but to the community as a whole. And subsequent phases, Building C and D would help look to build on that, the model that we create with HPD for the first building, we look to apply that in future buildings. The next slide, we got a lot of questions and discussions over the months, and it's hard to distill into 10 and 15 minutes, very complex conversations around affordability levels, income distributions, apartment sizes. But what we tried to distill here for you is a table that kind of shows an emblematic first building of Building B, with a range of income levels from 30 to percent of AMI, with studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, right? A range of options that really reflect the needs of folks that are in the neighborhood. The building would also include what we're calling, we're not calling, our folks at the Bach Network who operate the IBZ, who, I see Quincy here, our friends from Central Brooklyn EDC, LaShawn Muhammad who could not be here tonight but has worked very closely with this, on this, and our friends in the LDC of East New York on approaching the city through EDC about funding a Green Economy Institute that would be funded by the city as part of this first building, so that we're not just waiting for job creation and jobs in future phases, that the first phase, while it's predominantly housing, would start to create programs and pave the road for job training and opportunities for the future phases that could bring more employers here. Building D, the third building, I heard louding, we heard, my team, many of us are spread out through tonight, I'm not going to introduce everyone because in the interest of time. But one of the first meetings that we had with you all, you told us that Broadway Junction is a place that's ripe for a branch of higher education. And you asked us, could we try and go and find one? Now, I'm just trying, I'm a home builder, right? I don't have the ability to twist the arm of the big bureaucracy of the city to force City University of New York or anyone else to come here. But as a show of good faith, we worked real hard to try to go talk to them early and often at CUNY about the idea of coming to East New York. And I can't stand up here today and say to you that they promised to do that now, and I would never dare speak for them. But I can tell you that we've offered them a free option for five years to give them plenty of time to plan, to come and anchor Building D, up to 85,000 square feet, to create a branch or an extension of CUNY here in Broadway Junction. Thank you. Is a priority that you asked us to take on, and it's something that we're trying to deliver on, and we view, the execution of this project doesn't end in the next couple of months when the ULP user is approved or disapproved. We plan to be a good member for many decades to come and execute on these efforts together and working together to bring CUNY here over the long term. The chancellor has sent us a letter, it's included here, saying that they're very interested about the opportunity to come here, and if we can get the ULP approved, that they would like to come to the table and start having real conversations about anchoring that future building. That building would also include 70 parking spaces to try to address some of the off-street parking challenges that we've heard from a lot of folks in the last few weeks and months about all of the disruptions to parking that's coming as part of new development in the area. The final building, Building E, would really be the commercial hub of this rezoning effort and include up to 440,000, I'm sorry, up to 440,000 square feet of new commercial space, potentially 100,000 square feet of which would be for industrial, light industrial jobs, maker jobs, things like recording studios who have come to us and said, you know, I was born in East New York, I moved to LA and started a record label called East New York Records, is a gentleman, an entrepreneur who's been in touch with us. I would love to bring my recording studio and entire label back to East New York, but I can't find the space to do that. I would love to help anchor this new development here if we could get this done. Things like infrastructure that faces the community. Things like infrastructure that faces the community, whether it be ambulatory care or other types of community infrastructure uses that could help anchor this building, we're happy to entertain and bend in conversations with. And then also the excitement about, we've met so many amazing entrepreneurs and creative people in this neighborhood, make things, build things. Mom and pop candle makers, people who just operate little coffee shops, who would say, I would love to be able to locate my business across the street from the Broadway Junction Transit Hub. If you could get this project done, please, 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 could we continue the conversations about coming and helping anchoring the new development here in Broadway Junction? And part of knitting together this new development, it really matters what goes on at the retail level. And we've successfully employed this tactic in other places, and we've developed new buildings, that if you build spaces small enough, you make them accessible to small businesses. You don't just put 20,000 square foot space on the market and say, oh, good luck, whoever could pay the most could take it. If you're intentional about creating small spaces, you can actually accommodate small business. And we've learned this from many decades of economic development work, from our friends like Darryl Holland, who's here from BACH, who've done this work with Brooklyn Chamber and many others over the years. If you create space intentionally, you can serve the needs that people are asking for, and that's what we would try and do here. And yeah, we are trying to leave one or two larger scale spaces for a grocery store, for a movie theater, for a Dave and Buster's or entertainment uses that folks have told us they'd like to come see. But the majority of the buildings, Buildings B, C, and D, would actually cater to small retail footprints. Another thing that will knit this new development together is this new open space network that we talked about. And so the creation of a new open space across from the Transit Hub at the corner of Herkimer and Van Sindren, the old Calvary Baptist Church parking lot that is now being used as staging for the MTA construction work, but when complete, would be transformed into a new public space. And that's our land that we're contributing to this effort at the cost of many millions of dollars because we believe that open space should knit together this new development. And we were also asked by Community Board Five many times over the years, can't you get the city to move some of the parking off that corner so that that lot can get bigger? So that we could create a larger park? And again, I don't have any say over EDC or Decas or the MTA. But at your encouragement and help, we went and talked to EDC and many of the other city agencies that had parking there and successfully convinced them to move all of the parking in the future off that corner so that there will be one contiguous public space stretching from Fulton Street all the way down along Van Sindren that can also create an enhanced pedestrian connection to the East New York Long Island Railroad entranceway. So again, you asked us to do something, and we worked real hard to do it. That's a theme of what we're trying to accomplish here. It's not just we come to you and say, oh, this is a great idea. We started in one place, and we've gotten to another through your input. And one of those pieces of input, if we go too forward here, Viv, I think we could show you. This community was clamoring for the remodeling and rehabilitation of Broadway Junction Transit Station for many, many years. The city finally came through, the city and state came through with $400 million to do that. We don't want this project in any way to be disruptive to investment in the neighborhood that you deserve and has been in progress for many decades. So we're trying to align the ULP approval and then the design development of each of our projects going forward so that they would not break ground until that work is complete. And we're hearing from the MTA, you see signs all over the neighborhood that that project will be done in 2027. We would not even try to break ground on our project, our first phase of our project until 2028. In fact, we tried to take all your feedback over the last three years and make adjustments to the plan based on it. You asked for more affordable housing. We diminished the amount of commercial and tried to provide more affordable housing. You asked us to try to get CUNY interested. We worked real hard to get CUNY interested, and there's evidence of that now. You asked us to have the retail cater to small businesses. We're going to intentionally design the buildings to do that. You asked us to remove the closure of Herkimer Street, which city planning and their great wisdom had kind of guided us to. And we worked real hard, had to fight back against the city agencies to allow us to put forward a new plan that did not have the closure of Herkimer Street as part of it. We also worked to reduce building heights. We were told, these buildings are too tall. We want to see a lot of affordable housing, but we can't have the buildings too tall. We understand that rub, right? Sometimes that's hard. So we worked with our architectural team and brought the building heights down by almost 10 feet at its highest, I'm sorry, 100 feet, 10 stories at its highest point. And have really tried to take seriously the feedback that you told from us, that try to do the best that you can to not disturb the unit count so much, but bring the building heights down. And we worked to do that. And I'm also happy to share that after many years of environmental impact studies, it is unlikely to see a significant shadow cast on Callahan Kelly Park, which I know the neighborhood was also many years in waiting for the remodel of. In fact, the modeling on the shadow shows that there'll be about an hour and 20 minutes of shadow cast on the park at dead winter in the morning, which seems like a small price to pay for the creation of all of this new investment in the neighborhood. This project was also designed with the input of many stakeholders beyond Community Board Five. I mentioned the work that we're doing on the Green Economy Institute with the BACH Network, Central Brooklyn EDC, and the LDC of East New York. We've also engaged deeply with local resident groups like the Junction Neighborhood Association and the Brooklyn East District Council of NYCHA. And other partnerships are in development now. This is not a one-time, one-decision moment. This is a spectrum of work that's gonna go on for many years. We've been in deep conversation over the last couple of months to do pre-imposed job training programs with Man Up. And I know that 18 Mitchell could not be here tonight, but I know that he sent through his letter of support saying that we're working hard to craft a long-term job training engagement together. We're also joined tonight by the Local 79 Laborers Union and our friends at 32BJ, who I know are not allowed to clap or hoot it up, but we appreciate your support. And we spent a lot of time talking to these unions about how could we work together on the execution of a project here? And when they came to me and showed me the sheer number of folks who are union members that live in this community board, it's a staggering amount of local jobs beyond further commitments that we're going to work on with Man Up and others that the unions are going to benefit from and their memberships here in the neighborhood. The rezoning also has at its center Calvary Baptist Church. And I won't speak for Calvary, I think there's a representative of Calvary here tonight. But the rezoning would allow Calvary to enjoy the benefit of additional development rights as well and allow them to chart their own course about how to maintain a long-term presence in the neighborhood. I know they've potentially talked about with the rehabilitation of the church, also thinking about adding more affordable housing to this proposal beyond the 1,000 units that we've talked about. So I'm coming to the end here, I'm sorry Chair, but you know, I wanna really, okay. The proposed actions that would allow this are an M12 to C64, M16 change. Essentially, that would allow all the things that I just talked to you about, the size of buildings and the program. And I'm happy to also say that the environmental impact study, while it did reveal a couple of areas, notably transportation, air quality, and construction that we need to work through over the next couple of months with city planning to further mitigate through things like street widening, traffic calming, sidewalk widening measures. Also, the next slide will show you a bunch of the things that we plan to integrate into the building that mitigate environmental impact further through green building technology. The world has come a long way in terms of its ability to address climate change impacts through building technology. And whether it is building green roofs and rain gardens that capture rainwater and clean the air, or even as we work with our friends at HPD on the execution of the affordable housing, to build the building to passive house standards, which is, forgive me for all the laypeople out here who don't understand passive house, I barely do, but it basically is the highest standard of building construction with the least amount of impact on the environment when you're doing it. In conclusion, you know, we're at the tail end of a five-long, five-year process here. And the conversation continues as we move through the rezoning process and beyond. And I'm not saying our plan is perfect. I'm saying that I've tried, we've all tried real hard to make it our plan instead of my plan, right? And if you believe change is needed at Broadway Junction in some form, I hope as you deliberate and as we continue our conversations, you'll think about it in the spirit of yes, as opposed to the spirit of no, right? It's really easy to say no in life, it doesn't take any courage. It's hard to say yes. It requires courage. It requires trust, it requires communication, it requires commitment to each other. And I hope in our humble way, we have demonstrated that to you Chair over the last number of years that we've been working together and that you'll believe in us continuing to do so. So I'm excited for the conversation today and thank everyone for their time.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I disagree. It's easier to say no. Right? So, just a few things. I know you said something about Calvary Church that they want to do affordable housing as well, right? The community can't go on what they want when we don't know what it is that they really want because we haven't seen anything, nor have we heard anything. The community has been asking for years for Calvary Church to come before us so that we can engage in conversation. So, right now, to put them on, and I'm not, lack of better words, a pedestal of wanting to bring affordable housing, it's just talk. We need something concrete so that our people in this community is not displaced, that we don't see a high-rise on that corner where the church is because they benefited from the rezoning. So to say what it is that Calvary is going to do without us having anything in writing is a slap in our face. We can't go on what they want to do. We need to go on what they're going to do, okay? So, I don't know how to be no other way but honest. I'm passionate when it comes to our people. I love this community. I've been in this community since 1989. And I've seen the good, the bad, the ugly, right? We want housing. We need housing. We are not pushing against housing, but we need parking too. To say that because we live across the street from Broadway Junction, that don't mean nothing. And I'mma say again, for a mother that has three kids with a husband, or not, and that child gets sick, do we really expect them to go across the street to Broadway Junction and wait on the train at night that come once every hour? Because if they go in an ambulance, they're paying $1,000. There's so many people in this community that have cars. And we know by law that you guys don't have to incorporate cars into your, I mean, parking into your project. But this is something that the community needs. This is something that the community wants. That 5,000 square feet that we keep talking about, that I think now is 10,000? Is it 10,000 now, the square feet of the space?
The new plaza.
Right.
It's 10,000 square feet.
Yeah, right. It's 10,000, we're not 5,000. We still not talking about parking. We're still not talking about parking. We have green space. We have Callahan Park that they just built. Why aren't we taking in consideration that with a project that big of 1,000 units that we're gonna need parking? 70 is good, it's a start. It's a start. And I'm not talking any, anything bad about the 70.
No, we understand Chair.
But to be honest, we need more than 70 parking spots. The M16, I think my committee, they've spoken about that. They pushed back about that. EDC is pointing the fingers at y'all, y'all are pointing at EDC. Somebody need to come and say, hey, this is what it is. We're gonna do this. So I just wanna say a few things that I wrote down while you were talking. The parking was definitely one. The units. We haven't yet heard a breakdown of what's the sizes of the square feet of these units. Because we don't want 350 square feet, which is nothing but a senior jail cell. We don't want that. You know, we've gotten, or tied up with the amount of units. But what about the square feet of each one of these units? How many three bedrooms? How many two bedrooms? How many studios? How many, how many one bedrooms? We need to know these things before we can say emphatically, yes. We need to know these things. And I'm gonna say, yes, you have been a partner with us. Anytime we ask you to come back, you have come. So publicly, I will say to you, Tucker, I appreciate your candidacy. I appreciate you coming back, and I appreciate you listening.
I appreciate that Chair.
We want this project to pass. We want the housing. But there's some things that we have to come to a median and about, like, we gotta have, what is it called? De-specific? Restrictive D. You agreed to that already. You agreed to that, and we thank you. We humbly thank you for that. But EDC, and you guys, y'all gotta come together. We talk about parking. I went on Fulton Street, I took the bus last week. I was waiting for the 25. The police are not parking no more in front of Broadway Junction. They parking on Fulton Street now. They're all parking on Fulton Street directly across the street from the new building. It's 2640 Fulton Street.
2440, yes.
That's where the police is parking now, in the bus stop, on the sidewalk. So it is a perfect example of, we need parking. We need parking. We gotta come up with something. We gotta get some kind of parking in here. That 70 at the end, we gotta do something up front. So with that being said, I'm gonna open it up to some community folks. But before we go into the community folks, we have a couple of coalitions and agencies and the unions. We have quorum. We have Isaiah Thomas. Thank you, Isaiah. We have quorum, committee quorum. I'm gonna ask the Coalition of East New York, for all you guys who want to speak, to come to my right. The Coalition of East New York. You're part of East New York or EDC?
LDC.
LDC. All right. The Coalition first, and then you can speak. The Coalition of East New York, you guys that come out, we have two minutes. Two minutes, two minutes, two minutes. And then Benny, you can speak for your two minutes as well.
Can I begin?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Christine Valentine. I'm an educator, a reverend, and a Neomaniya homeowner, and a steward committee member for the East New York Coalition for Community Advancement. We are your neighbors who have been fighting for justice for the junction for the past eight years. We have held town halls, roundtables, and virtual meetings about the redevelopment of Broadway Junction. We have surveyed the community, knocked on doors, and really listened to our neighbors and heard that they want a neighborhood-driven plan for the junction that prioritizes ADA, accessibility, improved transit services, a new Long Island Railroad station, a bus depot that does not pollute our community, more traffic calming and infrastructure that works, mom and pop stores, and real economic development that leads to living wage jobs for our young people. We have collected petitions from 400 residents opposing the current plan by Totum. It appears that all community voices are not being heard at this public hearing about a massive new development. We want to highlight the reasons why we object to the Totum project. By the city's own standards, our community has the highest risk of displacement of current residents, and yet nothing in the Herkimer Williams Plan explicitly addresses policies and benefits that might prevent displacement. The plan needs to show how the developer and the city will mitigate rental and sale prices from rising in the community, how evictions and foreclosure will be prevented, how big box retail establishments will not displace small businesses, and how property taxes will be prevented from increasing. The housing to be built in this first phase of the project is not deeply affordable, and we have no assurance on the other phases. The median income of East New York-
Wrap, wrap it up, okay?
All right. It's $46,679 a year, compared to the city's AMI, which is $70,643. And 33 of residents only earn between 0% to 30% of AMI. In order to meet, the residents need the projects would have to match the income bands of current residents. It does not. We need ironclad guarantee that market rate housing would not be built at the junction.
Thank you. Thank you. Benny Castro. We can't have everybody from East New York Coalition speak. There's too many people in here, cause then we have to let everybody from 32BJ speak, everybody from Community Employment back there speak. So we're gonna have like, you guys come up as a group, just so that we can hear what you have to say, so it can go on record. Hello.
My name is Benny Castro. I am the program manager of the Entrepreneurship Assistance Center for the Local Development Corporation of East New York. For the past 45 years, the LDC of ENY has administered programs of economic development to the East Brooklyn community. Our core programs are industrial development, entrepreneurship, commercial revitalization, and housing. As a housing development corporation, we have created over 700 units of affordable housing in East New York. Our mission is to grow businesses, change lives, and strengthen communities. We are funded by the city, state, and federal government. Today, it is my pleasure to read a statement prepared by Bill Wilkins, the executive director of the LDC of ENY. Bill extends his apologies to the board for not being here in person, since he is on vacation celebrating his 36th wedding anniversary, which ensures his making it to his 37th anniversary. Bill's wife's family moved to East New York in 1968, and were the first black family on their block. He has resided in East New York for the past 35 years, and has worked at the LDC of ENY, which is four blocks from the development site, for the past 25 years. Broadway Junction is his train station for work and getting home. As a matter of fact, over 10-plus years ago, the LDC of ENY provided office space to the Urban Land Institute to conduct a study of Broadway Junction. From that initial study-
You're gonna have to wrap it up. You're gonna have to wrap it up, okay?
I believe that we can all agree that Broadway Junction needs to be reformed. And the LDC of ENY has supported gathering as much knowledge on this topic, on gathering all the information possible for this project, and is in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Theo Perez from 32BJ. 32BJ, could come up with you?
Yeah, you guys wanna come up? Get the photo out. All right.
Ms. Chappell, do you have the other signing sheet? Only have half of it.
Perfect, all right. Thank you so much Chair for having us up here today. My name is Theo Perez. I'm here with my union brothers and sisters representing SEIU Local 32BJ. 32BJ is the largest union of property service workers in the country. We represent 175,000 members up and down the East Coast, including tens of thousands of commercial cleaners, security officers, and residential workers right here in New York City. We support responsible developers who invest in the communities-
Ms. Chappell.
-where they build. And I'm happy to report that the developers of this project-
What are you doing?
-are on the path to creating good jobs for the workers who will permanently staff these buildings. We estimate that between the residential and commercial components, we're talking about over 30 property service jobs. And these good jobs mean prevailing wages, meaningful benefits, and a pathway to the middle class for the community members who tend to work in them. Beyond that, we need housing to be built in every neighborhood in New York City to ensure that working families like our members are not displaced by dwindling supplies and raising rents. This proposed development will have up to 1,000 units, all of which will be permanently income restricted, restricted for low-to-middle income residents. So as the cost of living rises, and as working New Yorkers are struggling to stay in their homes, it's more important than ever that we're creating this affordable housing and these good jobs which uphold the industry standards. For all these reasons, me and all my brothers and sisters here at 32BJ are in strong support of the Herkimer Williams rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marian Rodriguez? You had a question? Can you come up? Can you come up?
Hi, Marian Rodriguez. I wanna know what commitments they have, you have, from companies or government agencies to lease the office spaces, and what jobs you will provide for the community. Be as specific as possible.
Yeah, I can be very specific. We don't have any leases signed for buildings that we haven't built yet. It often takes a long time to plan, and companies and government agencies are not gonna sign leases until we have approved building plans and are in construction.
So we have no, no leeways yet for any office buildings, for any office leases?
We have no signed leases as of today, no.
Thank you. Local 79?
Good evening, everyone. And of course, we don't wanna take up too much of your time. We represent not just the community and the union, but we also represent development, because we understand all three ends and all three perspectives. The people that stand behind me live directly in the community. They don't live across no bridge. They ain't gotta take two, three trains to get here. The people that are here with me, they represent your immediate community. My entire family and myself live in this very community. We understand development needs to be done. We understand that affordable housing needs to be built. And I also understand that this part of Brooklyn got the most shelters than they can possibly ever have in any other part of Brooklyn. What we don't have is somewhere for them people to transition. And a lot of people can't transition without the proper income. And I'm speaking from experience. I was a non-union worker. I was, and many of us here was non-union workers as well. And we use the term, but Local 79 really saved some of our lives. And TOTM has committed to working with us, 32BJ and Man Up as well, to make sure that the people in this community that already have these careers can work here, and that we can use this project to bring more people into the unions, to get good-paying jobs, and to be able to have good healthcare and take care of their children. It's very hard to meet in the middle, cause everybody has demands, and we get that. What I can say about TOTM, this is my first time working with them. I've been organizing for five years. I just made five years, right? And they have been the most respectable, the most transparent. And sometimes we don't get specifics, cause it sometimes is out of our hands. We gotta work with other people, and we get that. I'm just saying that we support this project, because it guarantees that people will have good jobs here, that they can transition out of shelters, that they can feed their children. And people are not offering 100% affordability anymore. Luxury apartment buildings have flown, flew out the ground since COVID. And it makes me upset, and I can't really do nothing about it unless we come to you guys with the opportunity for people to get actual real-
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanna address the Local 79. I don't know where you guys was for the whole five years that we've been going back and forth with them, but what I am gonna say to you, we're not against affordable housing. We not against the union. We're not against any of what you're talking about. I just wanna say publicly to you guys. I personally work for a union. I'm under a union as well. So I understand what you're saying, but you can't come here and think that we, the board, have not thought all of those things out that you're talking about, right? Our first goal is to make sure that people, the housing is affordable for the people in this community. I don't know how many of you guys live in this community, but I can tell you, when we fight, we fight for the people of this community. We was here when it was dirt, when it was trash, when it was graffiti. So we wanna see those same things that you wanna see. We wanna see those same things. And I was sitting here, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm passionate about this project, but it gotta be done the right way. Gotta be done the right way. I'm for, for union jobs. My kids work for unions. But I'm saying to you, you can't just be here for the showdown. You gotta be here from the beginning to the end. I'm gonna say that. This community board fight diligently for everybody in this community. That's the reason why we have a YouTube page. Cause the people that's not here, I want them to go to that YouTube page and see what it is that everybody spoke about as a collective. If we collaborate, and we work with one another, we will get what we need in this community. Collaboration, collaboration, collaboration. I just wanted to say that, it was on my heart, that the people of this board, Community Board Five, we don't get paid. We don't get paid, but we fight for each and every one of you. Each and every one of you, as if it's a paid position. This is not a paid position. We have counterparts like, where Michelle is at? Cypress Hills. We got counterparts like Michelle. Michelle has been here before I was here, and I've learned a lot from that young lady. I just want you to know, East New York CB5, we ain't going nowhere. We ain't going nowhere, and we fighting for our people. We want what we need. We want housing, but we want housing that we can afford. We can afford. We don't wanna build up for other people to come in and live. We wanna build up so that we can stay here and we can live. We got some kids. My kids, our kids, they go away. They get college degrees. They come back and can't afford to live here. No more. No more. Not on our watch. Not on our watch. Not on our watch. Thank you, Local 79. We appreciate you. We appreciate 32BJ. We appreciate the community. But I want you to know, when we sit down and we think about what it is that we're gonna do when we vote, we vote from here. We think about our people. We think about our children. We think about our elders. We think about the seniors. Forty more years, we may not be here, but our kids will be. We gotta fight for the future. We gotta fight for the future. They are not equipped now to do what we're doing right now. So we gotta fight for the future. With that being said, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Calvary Baptist Church asks to speak. Calvary Baptist Church, if you're still here, you could come up and speak and address the community.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Community Board and community. My name is William Wagstaff. I'm a civil rights attorney, real estate attorney, and municipal attorney. And Madam Chair, if I may-
Order. Order.
There were certain things that you pointed out about the absence of Calvary's voice. So I'm gonna ask you if you would allow me more than two minutes, so that I can provide the community what they deserve, which is an explanation for why they have not heard in detail from Calvary throughout this process, if you would allow me.
You may.
Okay. So, I'm counsel to Calvary Baptist Church, as well as other churches throughout New York. And as some of you may have learned, in 2020, the former pastor stole that parking lot that has been talked about, and sold it, and took the proceeds to purchase a home for himself in North Carolina. So I have been fighting on behalf of the church and been in litigation to try to recoup the money or the home, so that the money could go back into the church. There were fraudulent representations made to the Attorney General's office in order to sell that parking lot. So the reason that the church has not been here has been at my direction, because one, we've been in litigation. Two, there are members of the church that are still reeling from someone who was their pastor for over 30 years stealing from them. So a conversation about property rezoning is a sensitive topic. So I've been working with TOTM for the last two years. I've been in constant communication, and the church is in favor, but they have not been engaged, because they have been emotionally understandably feeling that there's yet another developer that may be coming to the table to rip them off. So that is why you have not had anyone from Calvary consistently here communicating with you. It is not because they are not in favor of the project. They are. And it is not because they don't wanna be a part of the community. So if there's anyone to blame, you can blame the person standing here, because as their counsel, I've told them, I'll deal with the developers. You deal with rebuilding the congregation. So as it relates to affordable housing, Calvary is in favor of affordable homeownership on our property. So we're not just looking for people to rent and continue to pay for something that they won't have equity in. We've been having conversations with TOTM about being able to do affordable homeownership if it is feasible. So we are not only in favor of everything that you want, but we wanna take it a step further and create opportunities for ownership. So Calvary is 100% behind the rezoning, and we will be here, continue to be here, because that church has been in this community since 1974, and will continue to remain. The church is not leaving. The church is not going to sell and leave you. And we hope that we can be the spiritual anchor in this community regardless of who's here.
We thank you. One second. We thank you for that. We thank you for that. That is a part of the project that the Community Board also has been fighting for. We've been fighting for home ownership. Home ownership. Not just affordable housing, home ownership. And it is sweetness to my ear to hear that you are willing to do some sort of home ownership. But what I am gonna say, cause I don't know how to do it another way with straight talk for perfect understanding, when you say home ownership, we need to see something in writing. Because guess what? We cannot agree to a rezoning- Because guess what, we cannot agree to a rezoning, a upzoning with the words of, we want to put homeownership and we have nothing to take to the bank. We need a plan. We need a plan because we would hate to cut out certain parts if we can't get a plan. We cannot give a blanket check. We can't give a blanket check because someone said that they was gonna do. And we understand about the church and about them taking the money and that the worship, they were worshiping under your advisement that you told them not to. We understand that. However, if it's beneficial to the church and it's beneficial to the people of the community, I think the church should have been involved. I think the church should have been involved. For the church to come, what was it, last month in June? For the first time? They didn't say anything about homeownership, all they said was, we agree with Totem. We want to see affordable housing. We want to see this. But that's all we heard. They said what they said and they walked out. And they didn't address the community, nor did they address the board. They said what they said and they walked out. And they did not address the board like you addressed. So I humbly thank you for the homeownership part, but we need to see something in writing with you and Totem going down so that this way when we vote, we voting for a project as a whole. We're not voting on promises. Okay? Um, I'm gonna take a few comments. I'm gonna actually move it down to a minute with the comments because it is now 8:32 and I'm not gonna be here to 10 o'clock. So a minute and we will take a few people from the audience and we're not gonna be able to be here and read whole statements. So when you see that clock go down to a minute, please stop. We would hate to cut your mic off. Sir?
Good evening. Distinguished members of the board and the community and the committee. My name is Reginald Bowman. My family's been in East New York since 1962 and I'm gonna leave that at that for the moment. But I'm the resident of Cephalo Houses. I'm from the public housing community and some of my resident leaders are here tonight, raise your hand. All right. As a leader in the community, I've seen many types of projects happen. And that's why last summer I invited the development team of Totem to a luncheon in East Brooklyn of resident leaders to present the Herkema Williams Project. Their plans to create affordable housing and commercial space and open space are exactly what this community has been asking for over the years. Many of us that live in public housing share the same ideas that you do. I see what it says, I'm gonna finish and wrap it up. But I think that this needs to be heard.
Respectfully, I cannot. A minute is a minute. Respectfully, I cannot. A minute is a minute. And the whole introduction, that should have been cut, you should have went straight to the point because there's too many people here that's waiting. Thank you. Respectfully. No, you're not being respectful. I'm gonna ask respectfully that you let the person behind you speak now. A minute, I'm sorry. Thank you. I am not being mean. It is part of order. A minute is a minute. And it's not fair for the people that's sitting out in the audience. So that is the reason why we gotta stick to the minute. Ma'am?
My name is Zion Sanders and I've been a proud member to call East New York my home for 30 plus years. I've watched the neighborhood grow and change, but not always in the ways that help people that live here. Too many longtime residents, especially seniors like myself, have been priced out of community to help build, we need to change that. I support Totem, I support Herkema Williams. Totem has taken the time to listen to what the community really deeply needs affordable housing that's built for the people who are already here. Totem listens to people unlike proposals that some have gone out without community input. This reflects our voices. Herkema Williams will bring 1,000 affordable homes to apartments to East New York, giving more people a real chance to stay in their homes and in their community and it includes 25,000 square feet.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, committee members, all those who are here. My name is Charmaine Bird, I am the pastor of the Greater Mount Carmel Cathedral and Worship Center on Fulton Street. As a faith leader and a longtime member of Brooklyn community, I care deeply about the dignity and future of our neighbors. Our congregation sees firsthand the struggles families face every day. The pressures of rising rents, the lack of job opportunities, and the absence of safe welcoming spaces for our children and elders. For decades, we've watched the progress at Broadway Junction. Always at a crossroads of potential. Promises have been made and broken and yet our community has remained resilient. That's why I'm here to support Herkema Williams Project, which represents not just a development, but a commitment to restoring what a community has long deserved. Stability, opportunity, and hope. And beyond jobs and housing, this project reimagines the heart of our neighborhood by transforming.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Craig Wright and I'm a senior citizen as well. I live within a few blocks of Broadway Junction. And over the years, I've seen a gradual, not necessarily good, change in the neighborhood. The rising cost of rent has, you know, basically priced us almost out of our homes. And that's why I'm here to support the Herkema Williams Project. Uh, we urgently need more housing in East New York that is truly affordable and designed for older adults, seniors, et cetera, disabilities in mind. And we deserve safe places to live within the community. Uh, I like the neighborhood, but you know, it's got its problems and, uh, you know, just, we need a change. The Herkema Williams Project will bring a thousand new affordable homes. And this is housing and stability, peace of mind, and a chance for us to stay close to our friends and family and so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, how you doing? Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Catherine Breones, I'm a HUD certified housing counselor at Cypress Hills LDC. And I just have a couple of comments on from the affordable housing and also about homeowners affordability. Now I'm looking at this breakdown. You're only committing 42, 42 studios for the low, quote unquote, low income of 30, 34,000. Honestly, working in this community, this isn't right. You're using information that is from like 2021. And, and honestly, people that I've come by in the office, most of them, monthly income may be 14, 15, 2,000. They can't afford this. You guys have to redo this because the math is not mapping. It's not mapping for the people that live in here. Also, I want to ask you, Totem, is what are you gonna do to prevent displacement and low to moderate income homeowners? What are you gonna do? Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I want to thank the board for giving us the time to speak. Um, I believe that the last person standing here asked a question that has not been answered, so I'm gonna repeat the question. Hello, excuse me, Totem, I would like your attention when the community addresses you.
You have our full attention, please.
Considering the project boasts so much about being for the community, how will you protect current residents in the area surrounding Broadway Junction from displacement when this project inevitably raises the cost of living in the area?
I don't understand why building a thousand units of affordable housing is.
You have not committed to a thousand units of affordable housing, you've committed to 200.
Would you like me to answer the question or?
I would like you to answer it factually.
Building a thousand units of affordable, up to a thousand units of affordable housing is meant to provide more home homeowners and home livers the opportunity to stay in Broadway Junction versus be displaced. So I don't really follow the logic of the question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you hear me? He didn't set the clock. Hi, my name is Darrell Holland and I recently retired after eight years of service as the industrial business service provider for BAC Network. Since 1989, BAC has supported local entrepreneurs throughout Brooklyn and through our management of the East New York and Flatland Fairfield IBZs. We provide technical assistance to the areas, industrial businesses to support their growth so that we can protect and promote the industrial jobs for this community. Over the past several years, we have been working alongside Totem to help shape the development team's efforts to provide jobs, training, opportunities, and affordable workspace to local businesses owners. This includes development of an incubator space in the first phase that will serve as a green economy hub to equip job seekers and businesses with the skills and access to opportunities coming with our goals in the economy. However, it is important to note that ultimately, it doesn't matter how affordable a home is without a job.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
How's it going? Uh, my name is Jimmy, so I am a new board member.
That gentleman in the white polo shirt is the last person. That gentleman in the white polo shirt, he's the last person. He was the last person online. Otherwise, if I don't stop it, it's gonna keep going and going and going.
I'm assuming my time will be restarted, right?
Okay, but you didn't go over there. You didn't go over there. Yes, sir, yes, Jimmy.
Yeah. Uh, so while I have many qualms with the Totem proposal, I just want to speak plainly, in the interest of time, I'll focus on one thing, right? The developers called this a generational project and they're right. It will uproot generations of families from communities that they've known for decades. They say that this project is built with East New York, not on top of it, but the numbers and the language suggests otherwise. Out of the 1,000 so-called affordable units, only 231 fall under the Ella program. And even then, out of that, only 100, 154 of those units are still priced out of what most East New York families can actually afford. So when you do the numbers, right, that means that only 77 units out of 1,000 units, that's just 7.7%, are actually affordable to the people this project claims to serve. That's not equity, that's a ratio. They mentioned CUNY as a potential anchor, even that's shaky, the language that they, that they, that they, that they say they certainly consider this site, that's not a plan, that seems like PR. And across even their materials, we see the same soft commitments. We prioritize local hiring, all of our projects have a significant affordability component. These are not legally binding promises, these are phrases designed to sound good and guarantee nothing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Crystal Lopez, I'm a lifelong community member and also board member of the CHLDC. We've seen this story before, Atlantic Yards promised affordable housing and 20 years later, hundreds of units are still missing with no real consequences for the developers. Our communities cannot afford more broken promises. What concrete enforceable guarantees are in place to make sure that these 1,000 affordable units, which by the way, 1,000 is nothing in this community. Uh, what can we do to make sure that we can guarantee that these units actually get built? What real penalties will the developer face if they don't follow through? And I actually would like to hear an answer to that one.
What penalties will be in place if we don't build the buildings?
No, the 1,000 affordable housing units.
That it's not enough for the neighborhood?
No, if those don't actually go up, because we've seen this before.
I'm sorry, what's the question exactly? Right, what's the penalty if we don't build 1,000 units is the question, right? Okay, so we have talked with the board before about working through a restrictive declaration in the months to come. We need the recommendations from the board to begin that process, that's why we're here tonight. Hopefully they get put to paper soon and we continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Amen, 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 amen. I'm Pastor James Neville, Holy Temple of Prayer. Uh, you guys have to try to lift up, I'm out of CCC, Dr. Bernard down on Pennsylvania Avenue. He's doing some great stuff down there, you guys need to do a Totem poll here. Um, with Totem, you should build up, you know, think that you can do some stuff with your kids, with your children, that they can afford a better place, don't just take them down. Dr. Bernard, you know Pastor Bernard CCC, he's building something down there on the other side. You guys need to help Totem build something on this side and build these kids up coming out of East New York. There's a stigma with East New York, nobody want to come here because you guys are not building yourself up. You guys are thinking too low, there's always been a stigma, I don't want to go to Brownsville, I'm not going to East New York because they can't do nothing down there. Bring East New York up, build Totem and do something for your kids.
Thank you. The project that you're talking about CCC that came through, that came through Community Board Five too. So I just want you to know, we do build up in East New York. The project that you're speaking about, we passed. With that being said, I'm gonna ask the Land Use Committee to come to the podium. Thank you, Tucker.
Thank you so much for everyone's time tonight, we really appreciate it.
We appreciate you. Um, Land Use Committee? Oh, um, Tucker, there's one question from board member Jessica Franco.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much for the time and I, 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 please I ask you, everyone who's here, just stay a few more minutes. We all care about our community, but it's so important that just as we heard from you, you hear us back and we hear the full picture so that we can all be on the same page. And I bring this question up because I think that there's definitely a misunderstanding. I know some folks brought up 1,000, other folks brought up other, other numbers and I, I wish our folks from 32BJ were still here because specifically, uh, when they spoke, they mentioned 1,000. So just for a point of reference and so that we're all on the same page, I, we fully support union jobs, we're in this 100%, but I think we all need to be reading the same page. So just for a point of reference, it's 1,000 units? Approximately about 1,000 units?
Up to 1,000 units across three buildings, yes.
Got it, and 231 of those would be.
Is the first phase, phase one. So I know there's some misinformation going on, oh, it's only 230 units. 230 units is building one.
Got it, so and about 231 units will be about $286 or less, right? Only about 231 units will be less than $2,826 a month. Meaning that 769 of the remaining 1,000 units will be much higher than 2,826 a month. I mean, that's what your document shows here, yes?
Not necessary, that shows building one. So we're saying if we could replicate that across the other future buildings, buildings one and two, we're trying to replicate the same program. The third building, as we've talked with the board a lot, we've been encouraged to try to land CUNY to anchor that building. Until we can continue the conversation with CUNY to know much, how much additional space there would be for housing, it's difficult to lock into a program for that building. So just like you've asked us for transparency, we need a little bit of grace here to advance the conversations with CUNY to be able to give you an accurate information on the third building.
Understood, so perhaps it's a bit misleading to say that it's 1,000 affordable units until we have, until we have something concrete and in paper, yes? So far, it seems that it's only 231 affordable units, no?
600, 600 units. No, but see, this is the information that goes on with this.
No, no, it's okay, I just, I just want us to be on the same page.
600 units in the first two phases. 600 units, Buildings B, Building C. 600 units, buildings B, building C.
And out of the 600 units...
And the future phase of building D would be anchored.
Sorry. And out of the 600 units from the first phase, only 231 will be less than $2,826 a month?
Not necessarily. We need to advance the conversations with HPD to see what term sheet they're willing to allow it for.
So everything right now is not necessarily...
Okay. Let me try to do this in a way that is, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, and I'm not trying to short the question, right? These conversations move over many years in a lot of different directions. Until there's a rezoning, I can't even really engage with HPD to get a full answer. We are now underwriting with them the first phase building, targeting Ella at the request of the board. The goal would be, and this is why we need the recommendation from the board, where you lay out what you want to see in the rest of the program so that I can have that in hand to go finish the conversation with HPD about what the neighborhood is asking for in the future phases.
I appreciate your transparency at this moment.
I need information from you to be able to finish the conversations.
I, I really value your transparency at this moment, and so just so that we're all on the same page, as of right now, it would not be 1,000 affordable units.
It could be. It could be.
But it's not.
Right now, there is nothing.
Just, let's just be 100%.
No, but I'm being as real as I can possibly be. I'm being as real as I could possibly be.
Thank you.
And Brother Paul, we've talked about this many times.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Tucker, for answering the questions that you answered. Thank you, board member Franco, for your question, your comment, and making sure that we all are on the same page. Thank you very much for that. Mr. Santos, Mr. Isaiah, you guys can come over here. Brother Paul. I'm going to pass the microphone to Boris Santos, committee member of the land use.
All right, so... Yeah. So this is not a full board meeting. Clarity. This is not a full board vote, rather. This is just a committee vote to get the ball forward so that we can go through the ULEB clock. The full board must vote before September 8th. If not, we're not gonna have anything on the record to recommend, as Mr. Tucker said he needs, in order to then go on to the city and require more finance, and request more financing, et cetera, et cetera. The committee vote is not the full board vote. This is the first step, but we're gonna be meeting sometime in August for the full board to vote. We don't even have quorum right now for the full board, all right? We are actually still taking input from a lot of community board members, a lot of community members, but as it stands, the Housing and Land Use Committee is a no with recommendations. We are a no on this project with recommendations. That does not mean that we are completely against this project. It means that we want this project to be the best it can be, but right now, it's not. And so we are gathering lots of recommendations still. We're gonna put those recommendations forward before that August meeting. So all the community board members will have those recommendations before the August meeting. So right now, as it stands, the Housing and Land Use Committee, again, is a no with recommendations, and those recommendations will be given to the full board prior to that August meeting so that they can vote on it. Why? Because we are still drafting those recommendations. Right. So we're gonna, and we're gonna do those recommendations, and everyone has to vote publicly, as we're doing right now. Any housing land use committee members have anything to say before we have a motion to move forward, the no with recommendations to be furnished at before the August meeting?
I just want to assure everyone in this room, and I think it's very telling that you have a lot of people that came out and then they left, because committee members and board members, we doing two, three meetings a month, and we're doing this on the regular. So people that care about this community and say they care about this community, it's interesting because we've had a number of meetings recently where they care about their issue and then they walk out the door. So I just want to assure everybody that's still in this room that we have been taking exhaustive measures to compile these recommendations and present them and do our due diligence, and we are not frivolous about this. We want this to pass, but it has to be right for the community, and we take our responsibility very seriously. So I just want to convey that to everybody that's remaining and let you know that when these recommendations come down, just know that there's been a lot of thought, a lot of thoughtfulness that has gone into them and a lot of work outside of the meetings in addition to the actual sitting in this room till 10 o'clock.
Again, I echo everything my fellow members said. We're in a time now, this is a watershed moment in this city for us as people. We're, we're right now fighting as being diligent, militant, and vigilant for our community. There are laws right now being proposed in your city council that will take away our right to even have this type. They're trying to restructure the Charter of New York City that your community board won't be able to engage this conversation. They're trying to take away the rights of your city council to have councilmatic deference. Your rights to be self-determining is being on, is on trial right now. So while we have the opportunity to say what we need to say for our community, we're gonna do it. We're gonna do it, and no is an affirmation, a very strong thing. No doesn't mean you're bad. It means you have a self-determination, you're saying what you are and what you are not. Stand on your truth, and you'll be able to say no and be strong with it. Thank you.
All right. Anyone, I, make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to decline this proposal pending the recommendations that we are presenting to the entire board in advance of the September 8th full board vote.
I second that motion. All in favor? Aye. Any, anyone opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention? He's not on the committee. He's not in the housing land use committee. Brother Paul, Ms. Rowe, Ms. Finn, myself, Mr. Thomas, and Ms. Lowman are the housing land. And Ms. Mingle's here. You made it. Thank you, Ms. Mingle. Ms. Mingle, your vote is? Is a no, so I'm infirmity. The ayes, the ayes to the no recommendation, and those recommendations will be furnished to the full board come August, before that special meeting so the full board meets, passes unanimously, seven, zero, and that's the, that's the result of the meeting right now.
So before we leave, I just want Mr. Tucker and them to know that we want to push this project up. We have to get it right. The pastor, the church, the homeownership that you're speaking about, we want it. You've heard from the community. You've heard from the board. So let's get together before August, what is it, the second week of August, let's get together so that we can vote this thing the way it should be voted, the way we are hoping to vote it because we need the housing in this community. Okay? We have one other thing to vote on, which is the parks, and then we can leave. Who's gonna do the recommendation of the parks with the...
So we have one more voting item. It got so contentious, so you could feel the energy just based on the Totem project that we have to come back to the first presentation, the parks presentation, which the vote believes is a yes. So we'll make a motion, but the vote believes, this is just to summarize where I think our thinking's at, is a yes. This is not an either/or. This is not. We only deserve our parks that we have right now to be beautified and don't deserve a new park. This is an and. We deserve a new park in those areas that are not being met, the needs are not being met in terms of open space within walking distance, but we would also like the commitment for there to be capital funding for the recreation, for the creation of a recreation center. So, so, and what? An improvement of the existing parks. So can I get a motion for any of that and someone state it more better, in a better, listen, it's nine, my brain is giving out, in a, in a more succinct and eloquent way than I am?
I make a motion for a yes with the recommendation for the recreation center as well as beautification of the current existing parks. Isaiah Thomas seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed on the, on the land use committee? Any abstentions on the land use committee? All right, there you have it.
I make a motion to adjourn.
That's my job. As the chair, I make a motion to adjourn. The meeting is adjourned.